Okay, we're ready David?
Yes.
All right. And just for the record, I think Councilmember Bailey has a mandatory meeting but should be on her way and I think Councilmember Hewitt's in a meeting behind us so they should be here in just a few minutes. Welcome to the November 8th, 2010 work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on these items. Tonight there are six items on our agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk's staff. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes for agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no more, no other public cards will be accepted. Will the city clerk please sound the agenda item?
Our first item is introduction and discussion with group representing Milton Equestrian Community. This is presented by Jack Flowers and Laura Bentley.
All right, Chris, you want to?
Yeah, Mayor, as they make their way to the microphone, let me, both coming. Let me just kind of give you some background on this and I'm not going to talk long because this is really what they wanted to do, to come and introduce themselves to you. We were approached, or I was approached, a couple of months ago, maybe a month ago, with a group that was forming in Milton who wanted to represent the equestrian community. This is not a committee that's formed of the city nor one that you have formed by resolution. But a group of citizens, which I think is great, if we can, if we can put some type of a face to that, that we always say, you know, we want, one of our key stakeholders is the equestrian community and we want somebody to go to and say, okay, well, the equestrian community, please stand up so we know who we're actually going to talk to. Jack and Laura have kind of started this initiative. Their presentation tonight is really just to introduce what their concept is and, and that's what they're here for tonight. So this is something I've seen, something I'm aware of, good information when I, when I heard it from them. Again, though, this, this is one of those committees that if it starts, or group that starts, is not one that is sponsored of the city or adopted because of a resolution by the council, so. Having said that, I'll turn that, I'll turn it over to them. I do want to interrupt since we do have something going on in Milton. I know I already had one council member ask me about it, just to give you all an update. On a house fire that's occurring at sixteen three fifty Freemanville Road, which puts you in proximity, is north of Birmingham Road, past the Fulton County Elevated Water Tower, almost to the county line on the right as you're traveling north. I've had discussions with our fire chief who indicated at this point, nobody in the house, which is the good thing, relatively old structures, I understand, an old farmhouse. They've talked with the owner, who is there with them. No idea on cause, but a pretty fast, rapid growing fire. So what they're doing right now is really protecting other accessory structures from fire, but everybody's safe at this point, but that's ongoing in Milton right now. So that's just an update. And I'll turn it over to Jack and Laura. I've got to run to the office and grab some papers and I'll be right back.
All right, and if you guys don't mind, one second, I want to also need to make everybody aware that Liz Hausman is here, we're fortunate to have here. And I just want to ask you, Liz, do you have time, I mean, you're second on the agenda, is that okay with you? Do you have, you've got the time? Okay, thanks. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, hopefully we'll, hopefully the mic will work well from where it is. I'm Jack Flowers and I know most of you also know Laura Bentley as well, thank you. We are both very active in the horse community. I as a professional here in the, based out of Milton, she is a devoted horsewoman and long-suffering mother and president of the Georgia Hunter Jumper Association. You know, for quite some time, we've, you know, we've discussed amongst ourselves and I know I've had discussions with some of you about the importance of sort of, not necessarily voicing concerns, but bringing the horse community together in a way that we can benefit Milton and also to, to benefit ourselves, to, you know, have some sort of organization, to have some means of sort of, you know, giving, giving voice to our needs and wants. And after, you know, I'd say probably a year and a half of discussing this and trying to put it together, we finally teamed up and we're able to get a, a solid group of people together that are very interested in being a part of this and benefiting the community. And I, I think we've, we have a lot of people are very excited about the potential for having a good relationship with, with the city and, and creating an atmosphere here that we can all be proud of. So we, we've had a, we've had a meeting so far, we were able to bring a nice group of people together and I think we're off to a, to a very good start, so.
We, we looked at your agenda for tonight, so we're going to keep it brief so that you get to be home before midnight. We met as a group in October at Dave and Julie Shannon's and the purpose of that meeting was to become organized, to try to start to lay the groundwork for what this equestrian group wants to be. I think one of the key components of why now is that the realization that the city has as a key stakeholder group, the equestrian community, is reason enough for us to step up and provide an organized voice back to the city for you all to be able to rely on as you make plans and develop strategy for the city. So the first meeting was, I think Jack pulled from his community and my community of folks that we kind of look up to as being visionaries in the equestrian community because we, as you all know, as you try to develop a mission statement, it's usually really hard work. And we didn't do it that night, but we, we kind of got a feel for where the group was going. So in the packets that you have in front of you is the, the meeting minutes from our first meeting and the agenda of what we discussed. So in going through that, Chris thought that it was relevant to our introduction, just to kind of state what the feel of the meeting was. Sometimes, and Chris, we spent some time when we met and discussed what we would like to do, is just to shed some light on the horse community and within the zip code of Milton, as, just as information, you know, horses are boarded here in a twelve by twelve box stall from anywhere between a thousand to twelve hundred dollars a month per horse. And at the highest end of our sports, we have families here that have several horses. So it's a very affluent community and these are the, this is the kind of information that we would love to help you understand so that you can also in turn tap into some of the revenue potential that lies within this community. A lot of times people come here from Buckhead, other places, and they, they board their horses here, they come and they shop here, they eat here, they, they use local farriers, they, you know, the vets, everything, all the revenue from this area is how they usually end up spending their money. So the, the fact sheet that we put out is, you know, just some of the things, the horses are usually really high-end horses, there's a lot of training that goes on. People like to be in this community because it's close in proximity to training facilities, horse, you know, Chateau Elan, Conyers, Will's Park. This area is very desirable, people like to keep their horses here for that reason. And trying to look at what we could do better as a city in becoming a little bit more horse-friendly. Some of the things that we talked about, we're just increasing public awareness about what we do, you know, horses are good neighbors and, and we can probably help the community to understand. And also, in our discussions at this meeting, we talked about how we can be better neighbors with our, our neighborhood neighbors as far as farms and the things that horses bring with, to our neighbors and, and being very sensitive to that. So on the list, we have areas of improvement. The, the first meeting, we talked about a lot of, you know, land use designation for equestrian use, maybe equestrian friendly zoning. One of the key examples was the limitation of having, having to have a barn behind your house. Just as an example, so many people, well, have been looking to buy farms in the city, but plots of land cannot be purchased for that reason because you can't put the barn behind the house. I mean, you can't put the barn in front of the house. So I think there are some ways that we could adjust some of the standards that we have, I don't know if standards is the right word, to make properties easier for purchase for I don't have anything else as far as areas of improvement, but we also, you know, as we said, talked about Milton's strengths, our proximity, our land values have held, we have the trail and park system. And then also, just the city is, is saying to us that this group is important with making us stakeholder, so that in and of itself, I think, is something that we need to publicize to fellow equestrians as us having, are worthy of input to the city to sustain operations here.
Well, and I think in what she was saying about, you know, people wanting to be here because proximity and whatnot, aside to that is that there's a lot of people that want to be in the immediate area, if they can't be in Milton, you know, they want to be across the line in Cherokee County, they want to be in the surrounding area. And a lot of people talk about Alpharetta and wanting to be in Alpharetta because it's the horse community. Well, nine times out of ten, when they're talking about Alpharetta, what they really mean is Milton, because the bulk of the horse farms that people are trying to be close to are here in Milton versus in, in Alpharetta proper. So, you know, I think in long term, this will give us an opportunity to also sort of make our mark more as Milton than as just a subdivision of Alpharetta.
You know, I just want to say, you know, last, our last retreat, we, the entire council was very supportive in wanting to work with the horse community and do what we can, so I'm just excited that you guys have jumped in there to do this because unfortunately, you know, in the past, we've got a lot of ordinances that were never enforced in the past, so they were never an issue. But Laura, you bring up a great point. You know, maybe having an ordinance saying you can't have a structure in front of a house doesn't really ring home to many people as an issue, but when you have a farm and you, maybe you need to put the barn in front or somewhere else, that's a big issue. So those are the kind of things we need to know, what we can do to be able to work with you guys and the equestrian community to make it work better for everybody. So I think I can pass that on from the whole council that, you know, there certainly is, if you can let the equestrian community know that we all want to, want to support them and work together.
Well, I think just in, in naming us as a stakeholder group is, is support enough, so that's kind of the reason why we're here. And we look forward, I mean, we don't want to become a committee of the city, we're, we're organizing just so that we can be organized and have a better voice. So I guess, are there any other questions or?
Does anybody have any question, Karen?
Couple things. Number one, I really appreciate y'all working together on this because I truly believe it's the equestrian influence that differentiates Milton with all of our neighboring cities. I mean, that's what makes us different, I think that's important. I hope y'all can work with us on zoning, it's always bothered me that we treat a commercial equestrian business like we do a Walmart in some situations, and they're very, very different and, and they need to be treated differently. And so I hope you can give us some suggestions on ways that we can, we could treat them as differently than we do a regular commercial business like Walmart. I also think, glad to see that you're actually working with other non-equestrian and some of the other non-farms because I think people in subdivisions tend to forget that it was really the, the horses and the farms that were here prior to the subdivisions coming in. And so I think if you can find a way to work together on that, I think that's great. And lastly, I would love to get y'all's help on helping to really brand the city and, and the thing that makes us, you know, unique, which is the equestrian thing, and how we can better brand ourselves to, to be the equestrian area. And I know I've talked to Jack, it, it upsets me when I see the big signs for these different people at horse shows that say Alpharetta, Georgia, and I know that they are really not in Alpharetta, they really are in Milton, but so anything you can do to try to help up brand the city of Milton as the equestrian area, I really appreciate that.
Good.
I too am glad that you've finally organized and come together as a group over there. We're already branded unofficially. Obviously, that's our logo, somebody's logo, but as Karen was saying, the horse farms are the image of the city and it's, it's that image that promotes us. And in order, and part of our vision or mission statement is to preserve the rural character of the city. And obviously, the horse farms are the most important part of that. And we've talked about preserving the large farms out here and hopefully re-tweaking our, our zoning ordinance to, to permit that and promote it. So I'm, I'm glad to see y'all getting together and as a force here and, and working with us to adopt ordinances that we can both live with and promote, in the same time, promote the city.
Anybody else?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just echo the sentiments of Councilmember Thurman and Councilmember Lusk, but in that same vein, are there, do you guys have some specific timeframes or is it too early on to be able to tell us when you might provide some of those recommendations to us? Because as Mayor pointed out, we talked about how we can make our zoning ordinance a little bit more horse-friendly and, but we haven't really taken steps, I don't think, in that regard yet. So that could be really helpful to us.
Well, I, you know, we've, we've just really started the, you know, started organizing, we'll probably have another meeting coming up here early December, but, you know, we've made it clear to everybody that we are aware that you guys are trying to get some direction on some of this and so we, you know, we don't need to rush, but we do need to work quickly. So, and, and just to be clear, you know, we've, you know, it's not just Laura and I, we, we have a diverse group of people from all walks, you know, not just, not just disciplines as far as jumpers or hunters or dressage, but we have, you know, doctors, lawyers, you know, you name it, we have people that are very interested in, in what we're doing here that are willing to put their input. And we have yet to talk to anybody that's not excited about the opportunity to sort of, you know, participate in what we're doing and get a voice. So I think very quickly we'll be able to get some sort of consensus on some of those things.
Okay. Thank you guys very much and again, pleased to take the message back that we are all in support.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
This next item, I just want to say I'm proud to be able to have Johns Creek councilperson Liz Hausman, but soon to be our Fulton County Commission Representative Liz Hausman. So Liz has volunteered to come up and just talk to us for a few minutes and, and really, you know, up for questions and whatnot or any concerns we may have, so she begins her, which I guess, when do you officially start?
January fifth.
Okay. So that, you know, she might have some idea of any concerns that City of Milton has and our residents. So with that, I'll just kind of open up to Liz, do you have anything you want to say?
Well, just briefly, first of all, Mayor and council, thank you so much for inviting me to be here tonight. It's a real pleasure to come out to Milton and celebrate how unique you guys are and to hear the presentation about the horse farms, I felt like was very indicative of what y'all are all about.
You guys have one, don't you?
We have a few left. We used to have, when I moved to Fulton County twenty years ago, we had quite a few more than we do today.
We could share our committee if you have any more.
Well, no, I think it's great, I think it's great that you've got an active community that wants to maintain and, and make sure that they stay around. And I celebrate with you what y'all have done in creating that sense of community. You mentioned that I used to be on the Johns Creek City Council, I feel like I can really relate to what y'all have gone through in many ways, creating a new city, working with Fulton County. Sometimes it's been easy and sometimes it's not been so easy, so I can share a lot of what y'all have gone through personally. And so I bring that to the county commission. I don't know if you're aware that I also spent four years on the Fulton County Board of Education and I think that schools are a very, very important part of our community across North Fulton, so I bring that perspective as well. But basically, as I get ready to start in January, I wanted to come visit with you and, and just see what's on your mind, make sure that we open the lines of communication, that you know that I do want to help you any way I can and be your representative. I've got big shoes to fill with Lynn Riley, I know she's worked closely with you over the last six years or, she was on six years, the city's not six years old. But basically, I just want you to tell me, you know, what's important from your perspective and if you can't think of it tonight, just know that I'm willing and, and ready to work with you in the future.
First thing I just want to say is that, you know, we have enjoyed working with, with Lynn and like you say, you did have some big shoes to fill, but I'm excited that, that you're going to be on the commission and that we'll have somebody to communicate with and that I know we'll look out for all of our, you know, all of North Fulton. So again, first thing I'll just say, congratulations and let you know that I'm excited for you and glad for the City of Milton that you're going to be representing us, so. And then I'll just kind of open it up, anybody have any specific questions or? I think the biggest point I would see is just the fact that, that Liz is letting us know that she's open to communication and that we need to communicate with her and, you know, let her know what's going on and issues we have and, and so, but if there's any specific questions, feel free.
I think it's unfortunate, a lot of our residents don't realize that even though we're a city, still the largest part of their tax payment doesn't go to the City of Milton, it goes to Fulton County. So the decisions y'all make down there impact them just like the decisions we make here impact them, so, especially when it comes to a lot of the budget type items, so. Good luck, still not real sure why you wanted to do it, but I'm a hundred percent behind you and glad you're willing, so.
Well, it's interesting, actually, the largest piece of your property taxes goes to the school system.
It does. School board, yeah, it does.
Yeah.
And then it goes to Fulton County and then Milton gets what's left over.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the services you provide are the ones that are closest to the people and so I recognize that. And I understand that, you know, you have struggles with Fulton County and you're not alone in that. But anyway, I look forward to working with you.
And I'm sure you can relate to some of those.
A little bit, yeah.
Bill?
Yeah, Liz, glad to have you on board. Up until this past election, Lynn had a water task force and I was wondering if you're going to carry that up for now.
Well, water is one of the key issues that we face and I know it's a big issue here in Milton. So, yes, I do think that it's important that we continue to make sure that the water needs are paramount and that we work through them, you know, with the state issues that we have to also deal with. Are any of you on that water council?
Yes.
I'd like to talk to you about that offline and get, you know, some history from you and maybe we can get together. Just so you know, I am going to keep Scott Graham as Chief of Staff and Edward Leidemeyer as well. I will bring on one new staff person, but I think it's important to keep the continuity. Their historical knowledge is very important, especially with regards to water. So, yeah, I do think we need to continue that.
Not every issue that comes up is a major issue. And I've spoken with Scott on several different occasions, knowing that Lynn's covered up or has been covered up. So, Scott's essentially been the main point of contact. For those who haven't met Scott or are familiar with him, if you could send his contact information from, to all of us here.
I'd be happy to. And you know, he lives in South Forsyth.
Anybody else?
Practically a neighbor.
I'd just like to say thank you for coming and offering yourself to us and your services and look forward to working with you.
Well, I appreciate that and y'all seem kind of shy. You really don't have any.
We're scared of the camera.
Hey, now's not the time to, you know, really let it out, but that'll, that'll be coming soon.
Well, I, I just really wanted to say that I really, really mean it. I do want to hear from you guys and I'm not just saying that. I do think that there's serious issues that we need to work on together.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. And y'all keep up the good work.
Good luck and whatever we can do to help you guys, let us know too.
Likewise.
Don't be a stranger.
Thanks, Liz. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the discussion on Milton's strategic plan process and design. And for those of you in the audience that don't know, Frank and Allison Foster have worked with us on our last retreat and I think we, it was a very positive experience and we hope to continue that moving forward. So, I want to just welcome Frank and Allison.
Good evening, Council. Can stand. The purpose for our brief presentation to you this evening is just to kind of announce the kickoff of the strategic planning process. As we've talked throughout the retreats, we want to make sure that you're kept informed all along the way and that you have, at key opportunities, chance to react and respond. The strategic planning team, and Chris, I'm going to ask you to speak to some of the names on the list. The strategic planning team is comprised of both representatives from the administration as well as members from the community. Because one of the things that we believe is that any strategic plan for the city should be representative of the key stakeholders of the city. And to your point earlier, Jack, and so, we wanted to make sure that both, both perspectives were represented, both internally and externally. And as you can see, which members of the staff have in fact agreed to serve. And Chris, do you want to talk about the community representatives at all?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to. I don't have a little sheet in front of me, but I think I, I'm good at this point. If I don't know them by now, I'm in trouble. As we tried to put together who our core strategic planning team would be, we obviously looked to some of the department heads in the City of Milton who come with kind of more of a, the group that kind of provides more of the strategic direction for the city. Of course, Frank and Allison gave me a cap and said, "You can't have any more than X." And I said, "Okay, I get it." So, we can actually have a group that is small enough that we can get some good work done. So, we do have some of our, of our staff members on, on the core strategic planning team. And then we elected to look to a couple of different areas. One was the three areas that you all decided were our key stakeholders, being the residential community, the equestrian community, and the business community. As well as, after a discussion with Frank and Allison, one of the things we came up with was the fact that quite often left out, although they play such a major role in the lives of our citizens, is a representative from the Board of Education, since schools are so ingrained in our community fabric that it was appropriate moving forward with Milton to have a representative from the schools. Kind of not going in any kind of order, we have the wonderful assistance of the new Milton High School Principal in this process, Cliff Jones. Cliff is a great guy, took over after Ron Tesh retired this last year. He's a great thinker, good visionary, and I think, as is evidenced by the fact that the Board of Education tapped him at such an early point in his career to lead a major high school. I think we're very, very, very lucky to have him accept a position to help us through this process. Now, getting into your key stakeholder groups, one with us tonight, very capable of representing the equestrian community, also serves in our Parked Rec Advisory Board, is Jack Flowers. Representing the business community, and this was after a discussion with Dale Jackson, who is the President of the Milton Business Alliance this year. We've come up with two names. One has confirmed at this point. There may still be one additional add-on, but at this point, I don't have a confirmation there. The one that has confirmed is Jimmy Carter, Managing Partner at Milton Cuisine in Crab Apple. And then finally, Mike, and I always mess up his last name, I think it's McAlpin, even though I always want to say Mackelpeen, but I think it's McAlpin. Mike is a resident of the City of Milton, representing the residential community. He's retired. Mike spent 38-plus years in the strategic planning arena and at this point shares a residence between the City of Milton and a horse farm that he has bought in the state of Texas, although he's here more than he's there. He brings a good residential perspective as well as a career of doing this type of activity on a much larger scale. So, those kind of sums up the, the community perspective and, and you've got your list in front of you to see who the, who the key staff are at this point, part of the core team. Allison?
The, just, just one further comment on the internal staff. We tried to get a mix of both operational, administrative, and support so that we can bring all the, all three of those perspectives to the planning table as well. There will be other people involved so that we didn't have a cast of thousands at the planning table. There may be an occasion where we need to ask a subject matter expert to come and join the conversation at the planning table, but those folks will be there for the purpose of providing their perspective and then, and then roll off and then there may be others. And then, of course, there'll be administrative and logistical support to support the efforts of the group. You can see there the, the time commitment because you all had done ahead-of-time work for the group in terms of setting the strategic direction and identifying the stakeholders and some of the vision elements. It actually shortened the process for the entire group. And so, what would normally be nine to 10 sessions has been reduced to seven to eight, so I'm sure the team thanks you for that. We decided to go half-days, half-day meetings and, again, to keep the momentum going every two weeks or as frequently as they need to happen without getting too much space in between. The official start date will be November 17th through April 2011. And we think that the timing of this couldn't be more perfect for the City of Milton. In fact, the other cities that we work with, we wish they were as strategic about choosing a strategic planning time because this allows the planning and thoughtfulness to be done in advance of the budget. You know, we talked about it retreat, you don't want the budget to drive the direction. You want the direction and desired outcomes to drive and, and inform your budget. So, the timing of this is really, is really perfect. And as you can see in the lower part of the document, the dates that have set so far, we've had a conversation with the staff to do much the same as we're doing with you tonight. November 8th is our official announcement to you. And then, starting tomorrow, we'll actually be doing one-on-ones with each member of the team. And we also hope to have those conversations with the community representatives as well because one of the things that helps expedite the process and also inform the process is to hear a little bit about what they see as critical issues for the City of Milton in the future, not current issues right now, but again, keeping that future focus. So, then we'll have one-on-one conversations with them, much like we did with you before the retreat. There'll be an orientation on the 17th and then the dates that are below that, February 14th, March 14th, and April 11th is when, unless you tell us otherwise, is when you can expect the team to report back to you. Of course, if you'd like to hear more frequently than that, you know, we'll be happy to do that, but right now, we looked at when your work sessions were and that would be a sort of normal and natural time. But that's, that's kind of the information we wanted to put on, you know, put before you this evening and entertain any questions, comments, or any parameters that you wanted to put out there as we started the strategic planning.
Okay. Thanks, Allison. Do you have any questions for Allison?
Want to start that in this time?
Yeah. Alan, go ahead.
First of all, thank you, Allison, for coming tonight and getting this started. And thank you to Mr. Carter, Mr. Flowers, and Mr. Jones, and Mr. McAlpin?
McAlpin.
McAlpin. McAlpin. For volunteering. Could we, could we speak to how those community representatives were chosen? I understand that we can't have a thousand people on the strategic planning committee, but it is an important committee and so I, I would like to know how we pick those people. I mean, I understand the stakeholder groups here, but how do we pick those particular individuals?
Well, a couple of different things. One is, well, the Board of Education one, it seemed like a natural fit since it's, it was our largest high school. Residential community, or the equestrian community, we went to, obviously, somebody who's represented the equestrian community in another fashion, who's a council appointee to a committee. So, that one seemed like that was a reasonable choice. Frankly, we had a good discussion, the President of the Milton Business Alliance and I, as to who would make a good selection from the business community. And Mr. Carter rose to that level as being one that, that we reached out to. And then, as, as a Milton citizen, what I tried to find was somebody who was a Milton citizen who could represent the residential community, who, I guess, number one, had a history of doing this kind of stuff, or at least knowledge base of this. Two, was somebody who could represent the residential community on more of a neutral basis, meaning not one that has, and I, you know, this, I want to make sure this comes out correctly because I respect people who come and speak in favor or in opposition to different things, but somebody who didn't come already having some type of a preconceived notion as to what was in favor or against something. And again, those are all great things to be in favor or against stuff, but what I was looking for with the residential is somebody who could come to a committee and truly kind of neutrally represent the, the viewpoints of the residents. I guess, Mayor, do you want to kick in any more than this? I mean, I've run the ideas past the mayor well in selecting.
Yeah, and Chris and I talked and we were pretty much on the same page and, again, just seemed to make the most sense, so.
And I don't know, Michael, I'm just, I want to make sure that that individual in particular, because that is the one that is representing the residential stakeholders, are we confident that Mr. McAlpin will represent the interests of the citizens that are in the Highway 9 area in addition to those that are more central to Milton in the more rural area? That's very important because we have many distinct and diverse areas of Milton and we want to make sure all that's representative.
I think so. And part of the, the strategic planning process is because we have a core team that actually has some size to it and because this isn't going to be one of those processes by which we go leave and we come back to you all nine months from now and say, "Here you go, here's the product." You know, there's going to be opportunities along the way. I guess Frank and Allison like to say it, and I've never used it in a, in a sentence, but I'm going to use it now, that there's plenty of opportunities for course correction during the strategic plan if we need to. You know, there's probably not the silver magic bullet out there where we, you know, go into something and say, "Yep, can guarantee you that everybody who is selected at this point is exactly what we, exactly what we wanted." I have a high level of comfort that, that it is or we wouldn't be sitting here tonight. But at any point, obviously, at the end of the day, when this thing's done, we want the best product we can have. And it's going to take a process to get to the product. So, if we have to make corrections or if we have to change direction slightly or modify our course during the process, there, there's plenty of, plenty of choke points that, that this will come and be discussed with you all. We're, we're going to lay it out and say, "This is where we are." And it, you know, the first one on February the 14th, if you say, "Well, y'all went one direction, it's a shame it's the wrong one," you know, there's going to be opportunities to correct where we go. So, you know, no, do, do I think that we can say that I can give you 100% confidence tonight that absolutely we got, we picked exactly right? No, but I can give you a high level.
You know what? I think you can give us 100% confidence that as you guys work forward and I certainly trust Chris and with, with Allison and Frank, as you see this and these individuals, please feel them out as you start working together and say, "Look," you know, especially on, as Alan's point, on the residential, we want somebody that's impartial, or, you know, impartial, or not partial to just one area, but that will look openly-minded and look at everything on an equal basis. So, again, if, if you guys start to sense that that may not be the right person, then I trust that you'll, you'll bring that, that to us and make.
One of the things, Mayor, I just want to echo Chris's point that's built into the process and Chris is kind of going down that path, is called the parallel involvement process, which is at key junctures, the team will actually take the product out to the stakeholders. So, I'll just use an example. If there is, like the Highway 9, Central Milton and Rural, there may be meetings convened with that area to say, "Here's what we've come up with, what do you think? Are we on target? Have we missed it? If we go this path, will it meet your needs?" And so, it could be even a homeowners association that the group would meet with. And so, they would identify, you know, where, where can we collect that input to make sure that we are on track and are on target? And so, that's an automatic that's built into the process at least twice, if not three times.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
Yeah, I'd just say, you know, to follow up on what Alan had to say, that, you know, you got a lot of flexibility in picking the people that you want to be part of this process and, and I trust you guys to, to pull together the right resources. You just get the responsibility of putting out a good product, so, so that's the check and balance there.
That's good.
Okay. Anybody else?
Julie? I think we're in good hands here.
Julie?
I want to just thank you again for all the efforts and those that will proceed this evening. In terms of, I suspect we might get this question, are these meetings open meetings? Is the public invited to attend? How are we going to publicize those meetings?
There'll probably be both styles of meetings. Obviously, if, if, you know, when we start this process and the core team learns its roles, responsibilities, and rolls the sleeves up and gets at it, you know, those will be, those will definitely be working meetings. I envision, though, quite honestly, I envisioned these meetings not all taking place in this building. You know, I think at some point, it's appropriate, if we're going to engage stakeholders, we need to convene in their, in their particular environment to understand, you know, some of the issues and needs as, as this thing comes to fruition. So, you know, are they all going to be here? No, if they're here, obviously, this is a city hall and just about everything we do here is open. I think we probably get the bulk of the early work done, probably quicker and more effective if we're not, if we don't have a big room full of people. But as you can see, even with this dates and times that we've set, there are several, almost. almost as many public meetings as there are potentially working meetings. So this is in no way intended to be done in a vacuum. There will be plenty of opportunity for public input.
And I guess part of my question was just from a legal perspective, how are we advertising the meetings? Are they public or are they not?
I don't believe they fall under the open meetings law because there's, at any of these, there won't be an elected, there's no elected official participation. It's really a court working group. It's an extension of the staff.
And so the first is the legal, the other is just what are we, what is it that we want to convey, especially from the perspective that some of these committee members, I'll call it a committee, might want to be seeking the input of residents and/or businesses. So I just think we might want to put some thought around that. Which of these do we anticipate being a work session? Again, obviously beyond this date, and I know that you guys have put a lot of thought into this, that's just one of the things that might be valuable for us to expand on so that we anticipate the question before we get it. The other would just be to echo Councilmember Longoria and Alan's point, and as we look at, you know, any one person, any group of people to represent the whole, is that hopefully in addition to seeking input from other areas, that hopefully these folks would also have access to surveys that have been conducted as well as perhaps the CPAC effort that's underway. And so I don't know, Alice, if you want to speak to that in terms of how this is going to dovetail with our comprehensive planning process that's obviously been the combination of over two years, and how will this group kind of dovetail with some of the effort and work that we're just in process of reviewing currently?
One of the things that we strongly believe in is that there needs to be a linkage between the strategic plan and any other plan that is guiding the direction, which would be your comprehensive plan, your transportation plan, any other, any other plan like that so that it doesn't look like any of them are created in a vacuum because they need to be able to support each other. We just did a council report out in another city on Saturday, in fact, and what that city had done was put together a document that actually linked all of the plans that had done before, and that information will be provided, the strategic planning team, so that they can, you know, readily see, you know, where the linkages are and make sure that the right hand knows what the left hand is doing, and they're all in support of each other.
Thank you.
Another thing, before we move on, kind of make sure we're on the same page for Chris's sake and Allison and Frank's. And I totally would, would agree that I would think you would want to, and tell me if I'm wrong, have your first initial meetings just with your stakeholders and work on a plan so that then at a later point you can bring that to us and the public and get input. But I know a lot of times if you try to start out with everybody, you'll never get anywhere. You've got to come up with something first to show people, and then you can get yes or no, or some direction from there, but you have to have a starting point. So I just want to make sure we're all on that same page. Was that the process you had thought?
Right. We would start with a couple of core pieces, mainly looking at strategic direction, validating that, and then that would be an opportune time to take it out and get feedback because there's no point in building strategies and measures and all of that if you're not going in the right direction.
And I don't, I don't think that doesn't mean that someone could attend that meeting if they wanted to, or a council member or whatever, but it's just, it's not going to be an unadvertised formal meeting, but.
Yeah, I just think it's important how we communicate it so that when we get those questions, we've hopefully already anticipated those so that it's clear because I suspect there's some questions.
Yeah, I think, you know, obviously, as it moves on, you know, and we're updated and whatnot, and it'll be certainly advertised and a public meeting and all that. Karen, do you have anything?
Yeah, thank you all for working on this for us. What do you expect our final takeaway to look like when all of this is done? Because I know that going through several strategic plans and all that work, you can have different kind of end products that are ended up being presented. What do you expect to have for us going forward, and what kind of, what cover, I guess you said, 2012 through 2015?
What the final document, and I think we may have shared a few of these at some of the retreats, what the final document will look like is a, one that has certainly the vision, mission, values, measures, core strategies, and strategic action items primarily. And some, most of the documents of most of the cities that we've done so far, it's been about forty pages, but that is mostly for those people that have the appetite for that amount of data. They also can be more abbreviated versions for other, other audiences. What some groups have chosen to do is from that forty or so page document is for, is to have like a trifold that would have the vision, mission, and strategies on it because everybody's not going to read a forty-page document. That would be mostly for internal use and guidance.
Well, if there's nothing else, I just, again, want to, we're excited to be moving forward and working with both of you and the rest of the team, and thank you for coming up tonight, and we look forward to meeting again.
All right. Thank you. Looking forward to it.
We want to have some of those meetings at Milton's.
I don't know if that's such a good idea. Well, that does sound good.
Good appetizer.
Yeah, Jimmy can give some appetizers. Okay. So I'll move on to our next item, which is the presentation of the status of the City of Milton Highway Design Guidelines Document by the Highway Nine Design Guidelines Committee.
Well, Mayor and Council, good evening. Glad to be here tonight. My name's John Bratton, and I'm a proud member of the committee that's been working for the last couple of years, actually, almost. And we're joined, and I'll get in in a minute, to some of the other committee members that are here with us tonight as well, but we appreciate the time to address you. So we'll kind of get right into it. And on the second page of the document here, you have an agenda. I'm kind of the setup guy, so I'm going to be covering the first four items on the agenda. We'll talk a little bit about how we formed, what have we been doing over the last X number of months that we've been doing this, and what were some, what was some of our thinking as we went through this process. And then we'll give it over to our teammates from Urban Collage and JBNA, who will really go through some of the meat of the plan itself. And then finally, Robin will summarize the next steps, the implementation process, the next steps, the recommendations. When we addressed you earlier this year, I think it was maybe February-ish or March, something like that, one of the things that we heard you say was some specific recommendations that could be applied to the overlay and that sort of thing. So we'll get into many of those here tonight as we discuss some of that. And then obviously, any questions or things that you have, we'll be sure to address. When you, if you go to the next one on the mission, it's probably not lost on you that you charged us to kind of review and revise the Highway nine overlay, and we took that to mean we wanted us to capture the character, and indeed, Councilmember Thurman said a little earlier, the branding of the community and things like that. So we took a lot of time to think through, how do we get design guidelines to speak to those types of things? So you know you're in Milton when you're in Milton, and you know you're not in Milton when you're not, kind of thing. So with that in mind, the next page, obviously, is just a quick, you know that already, whoops, I forgot we're two-sided here. The committee members, it was a good committee to work on, I'll tell you, because there was a very good mix of professionals, people in the industry that knew this stuff, of residents, of business people. And joined here tonight, Terry Her, Brenda Hemphill, and Diane Palmer are here from the committee. Raise your hand, please, don't be shy. So those are some of the members that worked on this as well. Next page, kind of moving right along, it's obvious to you what kind of corridor we're talking about here, so that was our main thinking. And I'm just going to go quickly into the deliberation of things. You know that we started in March of 2009 and proceeded to today. With that, we had a visual preference survey where we spent a lot of time, some of us drove around, took pictures of what do you like, you know? Let's, let's look at pictures from around the country, let's look at pictures from around our neighborhoods, from around adjacent cities. What's the kind of design element that we think we like? So we took some time thinking about that and kind of getting into the groove of what's the feel of the type of city we want to talk about here. Multiple presentations to get insight and context on that. The staff created a template which really got our own committee kind of jump-started thinking about that, using the, you know, State Route nine overlay standards, and a lot of pictures and graphics of what does this really feel like? And there was a lot of, not just looks like, but what does it feel like to be in, in that type of environment as we started to kind of narrow down what we're talking about? The next slide just deals with, you know, committee input. We started to then edit the staff template. We discussed a lot of the design concepts, buildings near the street, farther away from the street, where should parking be, to the side, behind, that sort of thing. And then we had some reviews. Certainly, the DRB looked at it, provided comments. We went to Kathy Cook, and Alpharetta got her input. Some of us who are associated with homeowners associations kind of talked it up within, informally, within the homeowners association, and got some input from people, said, hey, what are you thinking about? And, well, here's what we got down so far. What do you think of that? So there was a number of different inputs, not just the committee members themselves kind of thinking about that. And so finally, when we melted that all down, what we wanted to get to was a pleasing aesthetic. Well, duh, who doesn't, you know, who doesn't want that? But we wanted to get a unifying theme, but we didn't want monotony. So we wanted some variety. We wanted to capitalize on the equestrian atmosphere, and of course, the rural town vision and all that, but without the monotony. So variety was good, too much variety that led to hodgepodge wasn't good. And, and so if we could get it interesting where people could hang out, that was a good thing. Because as we kept meeting, one of the things that struck us was, hey, we're dealing with the Highway nine corridor here. People are usually going from one end to the other to get somewhere, and we really wanted to have it something that could be, have an ease of access, have some proximity to it, and something that in the end, people could feel good about spending time and not just be passing through on their way to something else. So hopefully you'll see that tonight. And let me just say that the, we also spent some time talking about on the next slide there, the guidelines intended as, what do we want this to be when we're done? None of us wanted this to be, well, that was great, let's just wash our hands of it, put it on the shelf, and let it gather some dust, kind of a trite saying, but we felt, we put a lot of effort into this, we felt it was important to the city, you had charted it. So in that regard, we wanted an overall picture, and literally a picture, and that's what Urban Collage and JBNA have done for us, to really put some, some texture to that. So it's not just writing on the page, it's pictures, it's this kind of thing, so you can really get a feel for what's going on there. Secondly, we wanted it to be an overarching, unifying document. We didn't just, it would be an adjunct to the overlay district and any other ordinances, but we didn't want it to be this thick because let's incorporate everything that could possibly be referenced there, and so therefore, here it is in one compendium. But we did want it to be the document, the living document, that would be used again and again, the go-to kind of document, that if someone's coming to develop something, here you go, here are the guidelines. Check it out because here's not only the words, but the pictures to tell you exactly what we'd like to see you do as you're improving our neighborhood. So with that, I'm going to hang it up and give it over to Urban Collage and JBNA, and then Robin will be on to kind of summarize. So anything for me before? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. My name is Matt Cherry. I'm with Urban Collage. I'm a landscape architect and urban designer, and with me today is my colleague Eric Bosman, who helped work on the plan. We teamed with JB Plus A, and they're more of sort of a horticulture-based, plant expert landscape architecture firm, so it was a good team. We worked with city staff and the committee for the past six, six months or so. What we have up here is actually just a copy of the, of the actual document. And we were hired, your city staff put together a lot of the bones of this, as, as a gentleman said, where the buildings go, where the parking is in relation to the buildings, and what it feels like as an overall corridor. What we specifically were hired to do is to look at exactly what that means from a streetscape point of view and from a landscape point of view. So I suppose the easiest thing to do is, if you wouldn't mind going to page thirteen of the document? And so this is really where we kind of picked up with your, with your staff and your, and your committee. And kind of the, I'm just going to give a kind of a broad overview and hit some of the highlights, and there's kind of some technical stuff, and I guess we can kind of address those as follow-up questions. But there were two sort of fundamental questions that we sort of had to ask ourselves and answer ourselves, and one was, as a corridor, you want a continuity, an aesthetic continuity, and sort of a thematic continuity, but it's a pretty long corridor as far as when you think about streetscape and landscape elements. Were there certain parts of the corridor that needed to be treated slightly different? For instance, certain parts of the corridor needed to have a slightly wider sidewalk or have a different type of street treat. And so what we ended up sort of landing on is, you really have three character areas. You have commercial areas, like where the, down near the Walmart and Fry's and down near Winward, and then you have another one up at Bethany that's more of a neighborhood commercial mode. And then you have sort of non-commercial areas that are mostly residential with some other things in there. And then kind of the third thing you have are secondary areas, and those really are the side streets. And so that was sort of one fundamental approach to, to creating these. The second was a little bit more of a technical issue, and since this is a state route, it, everything that you can do sort of hinges on the speed limit. So DOT is very specific about what you can put near a travel lane on a state route. And so I'll get into that a little more in just a second, but sort of a lot of these approaches sort of hinge on that speed limit. So if you go to page fourteen, these are just some, some sort of scenarios showing how, how this might look. The street is the same, this is one of the commercial areas, this is sort of a, just a little slice-through kind of the area that might be down near closer to Winward Parkway. And so, as I said, it all sort of hinges on the speed limit. If, it's currently forty-five miles an hour. If, if you're really trying to make it a place that is a place that you stay and not pass through, we think you get a lot more bang for your buck, and you get, at the end of the day, a much nicer pedestrian environment if you can lower the speed limit to thirty-five miles an hour. And the reason is, is because at thirty-five miles an hour, you're allowed to place vertical elements such as lights and trees at seven feet behind the travel lane. Some people are aware of this, and at forty-five miles an hour, you have to place about fourteen feet behind the travel lane. And so that's sort of a fundamental issue. Can you have that landscape buffer between the roadway and the pedestrian, thereby making for a much nicer pedestrian environment, a more comfortable walking environment? Or you put them on the back of the sidewalk. This particular example on page fourteen just shows, again, that commercial area with an eight-foot sidewalk, a ten-foot landscape zone, and what we've done is we've sort of offset the trees and the lights seven feet behind the travel lane in that scenario. If you go to the next page, page fifteen, this is very similar in the, as a non-commercial area. Maybe we do a different tree species, I'll come back to that. But it's pretty, it's a very similar cross-section. The only difference there is just an existing addition, you don't have the center turn lanes generally in those non-residential areas, and could present it, and we discussed this, an opportunity to do something like a small median. If you go to page sixteen, this sort of shows you the flip side. If you can't. If you can't change the miles per hour to 35 and you go to 45, you really are, you end up with all your vertical elements on the backside of the sidewalk. Which is better, is it better than what's there now? For the most part, yes. Is it a better pedestrian environment? Definitely not. Does it make you, as a pedestrian walking down the street, feel safer? Definitely not. But it is, you know, it is a significant improvement. But again, that 35 mile per hour, that's our recommendation. It all sort of hinges on that. It's a lot more bang for your buck. It's been done in plenty of other areas throughout Fulton County. So, moving on. Secondary streets is sort of that third character area. Those aren't state routes, so you have a lot more flexibility there. You can put things closer to the curb. And so on pages 17 and 18, you kind of see some scenarios whereby you might, in a future development or something of that sort, you might put some on-street parking in, or not. So you have some flexibility there. We were also wanting to look at, you know, this is meant to be a living document, it's meant to allow you to be flexible to multiple scenarios, such as the speed limit. You can use this document whether or not you change the speed limit. You can use this document whether or not you decide to add bike lanes, what we've done here. And I'm not going to get into technical aspects of it, but this actually allows you to retrofit bike lanes into those cross-sections. The other thing that we looked at with your committee is sort of street furniture family. And kind of where we landed on this is something that has a sort of traditional tone to it, but that streamlined a bit. And so what you're seeing on page 20 is the light and the bench and the trash can that we sort of presented four or five different options, and this is kind of where we landed. On page eight, excuse me, page 21, that pedestrian light you see again, but you see how it relates to a roadway light. We've worked with Georgia Power to get their recommendations on wattage and the type of light that they would prefer to use. And so we're actually going to add those in, because those are pretty recent conversations with Georgia Power. The, on page 21, to the far right, what you see is actually, I believe, the lights in the Fry's parking lot, or possibly the Target parking lot. Oh, Target parking lot. So there's already somewhat of a precedent for this style of light and this manufacturer of light. So that's just an example showing how you might do that in a surface parking lot. Page 22, that was something that your staff developed, and we kind of added an image there. We focused a lot on plant materials as well. For your commercial areas, we're recommending, just based on our conversations with our landscape architecture teammate, JB Plus A, and our conversations with Aryan Nurseries. Princeton American Elm is our recommendation for that, mostly because of the larger leaves, it gets a little bit larger than the Chinese elm. Would work really well in those commercial areas where you have a little bit more asphalt and you need a little bit more shade. The October Glory Red Maple is our recommendation for the non-commercial areas. It's a little bit of a medium-sized tree, you get some fall color and some visual interest that sort of allows you to change as you're sort of experiencing, experiencing the multiple sort of character areas of the corridor. Page 24, we had a lot of conversations, you know, there's obviously sort of this thread of equestrian and this pastoral theme that is so sort of inherent in Milton's identity. And we had a lot of conversations about informal planting, not, you know, not sort of the antithesis of the English landscape, the sort of manicured lawn. So we just, we put this in as just sort of a generic example of how you might start to put those things together informally. Certainly just one way that they could be put together, but it's just meant as an example. We also provided just a sort of a list of plants that as a team, we're familiar with that grow well in Georgia, and most importantly, are low maintenance. And that could be, they provide a wide spectrum of evergreen and deciduous species, and they provide a wide array of different colors and textures. So I won't go through all those, but we've got grasses, ground cover, shrubs, and ornamental trees. And I suppose Robin could probably hit some of the other pages that, if you all have questions about those, but certainly for the landscape and the streetscape sections, we can talk more in detail if you have any specific questions about any of those.
Well, as you can see, the remainder of the packet is pretty self-explanatory, and again, as Eric, I mean Eric, but Matt had mentioned, I can address any of those issues. But I want to concentrate now on the implementation. Obviously, we've talked a lot about, we don't want this just to be put up on a shelf and forgotten about. We want it to be integrable part of our development of the State Route 9 area. So it's going to be ongoing development and redevelopment, that's the goal, is to implement it, the application of these design features. And also just to go back, just to the actual document, I know there's been comments that I've received about shows and must, and then what there was shoulds and encourage. And the difference between those two are that the shows and musts come directly from the overlay district standards. And what I'm going to talk about more in a couple of minutes is the shoulds and encourages, because those were the design concepts that the committee came up with. And that's where we're going to be trying to implement them and make them a part of the Highway 9 overlay district if that's, you know, as we, that's part of the implementation. Also, the guideline will be available when it's complete in the city website, the community development department. The governance is by the community development department, because we're the overseer of development. Every day we see developers come in, even lately, we've had quite a few people come in saying, hey, we have an X building coming in, what is your requirements? You know, what is it that you require of us to do? What's the look you want? What's the architecture? So this would be a great thing to be able to hand to them, because really, it's the Highway 9 corridor that we have the majority of our commercial base. So like was stated before, it's just a really great pictorial depiction of what we want to see. Also, the city design review board would be also very key in this governance of the document. As it's a living document, it's not going to stay the same, it's not going to be static. But we see it changing based on the recommendations. So the next step, you may ask, is, okay, now you've spent all this time on this document, is what are we going to do with it? And like we said, and what you asked for was to implement some of these design ideas. So I'm just going to go through, I'm not going to go back to the document, but I'm going to cite it on each page. First of all, there's the following recommended amendments, based on the work that the committee did. First of all is access, page 6. Internal access and rear service drive should be designated to join together existing streets and to connect adjoining properties. Vehicular circulation between parcels should be required by inter parcel access in order to minimize traffic on streets and to encourage pedestrian traffic between parcels. Now, that being stated, the public works department very much encourages inter parcel access, and at times when there's zoning cases, will require that. But staff is of the belief that it's just another strap on the suspenders that we would require inter parcel access when there's major developments, and to have that secondary way to get back and forth between places. Another concept that Urban Collage talked about was building placement. We talked about it as a committee in general, we went in, through the visual survey, we saw that the places that we really liked, or the committee really liked, were places where we felt like we were in a town, that we were in a place that we could feel and touch, and that it wasn't these huge expanses of parking, but there were buildings, and there were trees, and there were streetlights, and there was, you know, amenity areas. And so to produce that type of development, we would need to bring the buildings closer to the street. And so on page 7 of the document, Urban Collage put together some different pictorial examples, and that there's different placements based on the square footage of each development. Continuing on, parking and paving. There's many items that we would like to update and to improve in our ordinance, specifically for Highway 9. On-site parking shall be located to the side and rear of the building when buildings are located close to the road. Newly developed streets shall be designed to accommodate on-street parking. We have some of that in Crab Apple already with the newly formed streets, and I think that gives it some more character and walkability. Provide a more user-friendly method for calculating shared parking, that's actually in another part of the ordinance, but we do allow for that, but it gets really complicated to try to even figure out how to use it. Revised parking standards provide ratios for additional land uses and for today's industry standards. For example, you all heard the data center just a couple of weeks ago, and how staff struggled with the parking ratio, it just didn't fit. So we really need to update our standards for parking, including more items, as well as updating the actual reality of what's needed out there, per the industry. Require new developments or redevelopments to minimize the amount of impervious paving materials. I think that there's various ways of doing that. And again, just trying to minimize the number of parking, or the amount of impervious service is really important to just create more of a community. Stormwater management facilities. If those facilities are located above ground, they shall be located in the least conspicuous area of the project site, or design them to create a natural look. So obviously, this speaks to if there is not any underground detention, and I believe that public works stances, they would rather see it above ground so they can control the maintenance of it, or see how it's working. But if need be, if it's not going to be underground, if it's going to be above ground, we would like it to be in the least conspicuous area, or to design in such a way that it's a, it's a natural look, or a theme to the project. Street furniture and lighting, Matt alluded to, just that we, they brought us some different schemes of street furniture and lighting, and we just kind of went through and looked at them and talked about them, compared them, what we saw in our visual preference survey, and that's what's before you in the document, that's what we're recommending at this point in time. So a part of the amendments would be to actually adopt those, that any development that would come about would be required to have those specific street furniture lighting And that is in black. Matt mentioned the lights at Target, Symbler Development, that's a champagne, which I think it actually works pretty well, because it's such a large expanse and it kind of disappears. But in general, the committee felt like the black would be appropriate color for the furniture and for the lighting. In regards to fencing, and I think this is an example of not having too much monotony, that you have two miles stretch of four-board fence that look exactly the same, that there's different variations of four-board fencing, and there was examples of that, as well as still allowing for the four-board fencing type that the Deerfield overlay incorporates with some of the stonework on the end. So again, it's giving us a variety, but still within the same family. We don't really want white fences, we don't want red fences, or whatever. We want it to be black, but to have a variety within that color scheme. The architecture. And regarding architecture to non-residential, amend the existing requirements to encourage and overall character of the buildings to be consistent with the overlay district, including the color palette. I know this is a very general statement, and I'm sure when we get down to it, there's many more specifics we can amend to it to make it a better document. But one of the other big items that we see is the color palette. The color palette is brown, brown, and light brown, at this point in time. And so we want to give some variety to it within reason, and to be able to reflect what Milton is about. No, there we go, sorry. Amenities, this is one of the last items in the document. We had a lot of discussion about amenities for the public, but, so what we decided was that for developments over 75,000 square feet, that we would like them to provide infernal amenity areas such as Pocket Parks, Plaza, Public Art, and walking and recreational trails. Obviously, depending on the type of development and what can fit on the property, but to have that included in the overall look of the corridor. So those are, those are specific text amendments to what came out of the discussions in the last year and a half or so. Another item that came up, which the committee discussed were, change the slide, the Deerfield overlay. We're proposing, staff and the committee is proposing to create a subset of the State Route 9 overlay district, much like Birmingham and Crab Apple is to northwest Fulton, where it would be a baby of the mama one, that if something was not addressed in Deerfield, it would go back to the State Route 9 overlay. The reason for this is that Deerfield covers, first of all, the creation of the new overlay would be the same area that the Deerfield Development or Deerfield Master Association has. We looked at that map, it's basically the Morris Road, the Deerfield Parkway web, a little bit of McGinnis Ferry on the south side, to the bridge and south of Forsyth County line. And much of that's actually already developed with multifamily. But basically, we want to be able to adopt many of their design guidelines into an actual requirement. Specifically, we've had issues with architectural treatment, and because right now, it's an office/business-type area, and the Highway 9 corridor really did not, I don't think, anticipate that type of design. And we want to be able to be business-friendly, and not make it really difficult for people to come in and to develop, and maybe redevelop as time goes on, that we want them to make it easier. But at the same time, we appreciate what the Deerfield area looks like, and we, it is a different field than the Highway 9 area, and that's why we believe that it should be a subset of the overlay district. So there is support from the Deerfield Owners Association. The Kimberly Matherly has attended a couple of the meetings, and she has indicated that the board is totally in support of us adopting, not exactly what they have, because there's a lot of issues that we would not address, but any design issues that we could enforce and we would want to see implemented per their guidelines, we would adopt into our ordinance. For example, again, back to the data center, the, well, actually, you'll have an example coming up next week, where we have an applicant who's had to ask for material changes to the buildings just next door, because their buildings are not specifically office-oriented. So they're going against, well, actually, it's more residential and a vocational school, but our regulations require 75% brick or stone and 25% other materials. Well, the Deerfield overlay district, or the Deerfield guidelines say that you can have those, that you can have pretty much any material, so long as it's not all the same. And so you have an office, a five-story office building that has mainly glass, we wouldn't permit a five-story office building to have all glass, because that would be in conflict with our design guideline standards. So that's an example of why that we want to be consistent with the Deerfield area, because I believe the comprehensive plan foresees this area to be a commercial area, and to continue to be not, I mean, there is residential areas, but to have the flexibility to continue developing as a main commercial area with offices and related type uses. This will require the Highway 9 Design Guidelines Committee and the Planning Commission hold a joint task, joint work session to initiate this text amendment, as required by the council's policy that you all adopted. the council's policy that you all adopted a couple of months ago. So, basically, I'm sorry I'm long-winded, but just wanted to go through those items that we came out of this process. And I really think that the committee did a great job of just being really careful and thoughtful and taking the time to really figure out what would be best for the community and specifically for the Highway nine area. So, with that, I'll just leave it up to any questions you all may have of myself or of Urban Collage or of the committee.
Any questions so far? Robin? Alan?
Thanks, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Thank you for all the work that was done, by the way. You guys did a, I'm actually pleased to see this document and the things that have come from it and the recommendations and this area is going to look really good if we eventually get redevelopment that looks in line with this. I noticed that the streetscape designs are based largely, if not solely, on the reduction of speed limit from forty-five to thirty-five. And we've, this council's had a bit of discussion, especially with other streets in the area, about reducing that speed limit and whether or not we could actually enforce radar and other things. What would be the chances of us reducing the speed limit to thirty-five on Highway nine to make this become a reality?
I can let Carter probably address that more directly. The difference between this, the discussion now tonight and our prior discussions is the prior discussions was whether or not we lost our ability to enforce on a road that we could actually reduce the speed limit on. I don't know that we have that luxury on Highway nine. I think Carter can probably speak more on what the state would require.
Well, just like any other road that we look at, actually, they would look at it from an engineering standpoint and whether or not the road would support a lower speed limit. They'll generally look at the rates that traffic is currently driving and whether or not you'd be able to reduce that down to a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. My experience with them in the past is that on Highway nine, we have not been able to reach that threshold. We've seen reductions from forty-five to forty miles an hour, but we were not able to get it down to thirty-five on other sections of Highway nine. So, it's really based on engineering and running those speed studies to see what current traffic speeds are on Highway nine.
Just to clarify a bit, too, as I said, you know, the document is meant to be flexible. So, even though you see one drawing in there that shows the lights in the trees on the back of the sidewalk, we do have like an appendix in our back pocket that has other drawings showing that scenario. I mean, so if that determination is made that you in fact cannot reduce it, we can pretty much swap out the graphics showing you this kind of Plan B. Because we felt it was just such a better design, if you can do that, and since we didn't know, we sort of proceeded on two parallel tracks. Well, maybe if you can, you do it this way and if you can't, you do it this other way. So, is that your?
Yes.
Just to add to that very quickly, everything that Carter said is absolutely correct. There is a whole process and engineering study to go through there. That being said, I would add that particularly the District Office for the North Fulton Region has been much more willing to listen to those arguments in terms of the quality of life standard more recently. It's not to say you still have to have engineering studies to back it up, you have to go through that process, but there are means going through having those conversations with the District Office and we have seen those conversations be much more advantageous within the last year or two than they ever were previously. As Matt said, from a design standpoint, that's a really vital piece and it's at least worth going and having the conversation if that move is something that the council and community feel strongly about.
To Alan's question, his point here, too, Carter. What effect will the completion of the new high school have on the speed limit on nine, if any?
None at this point.
Well, even if there's a different ingress and egress?
I mean, it certainly could be a component in the future, but at this point, I think they would, they would probably take a wait-and-see attitude on any impact that the high school would have on traffic speeds on Highway nine.
You have some, Alan?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Proton.
I'm a seamless, wasn't it?
I'm a seamless. I think another mayor wants to sit there. Robin, do we have, does staff have a timetable for recommendations to incorporate these recommendations into the overlay's requirements, the ones that you went over?
Our anticipation is to start on it as soon as possible. Like I stated, there's going to have to be a joint session. We're going to try to schedule one in early December, but, you know, we're going to be working on it right away. If, again, there's a lot of things to work through as far as the different items and vetting through it and making sure that everybody is on board and not, and just figuring out the technicalities of everything, but yeah, it's top on our priority.
And I have, as you were going through the recommendations as far as things that would be possible text amendments, I noticed there were some things that weren't pointed out and I just wanted to get the committee's feedback on why those things weren't pointed out specifically, landscape buffers. There was a statement in the recommended design guidelines that said the city should consider maximum setbacks in commercial areas along State Route nine. Is that something that's?
Well, that was kind of addressed on the one page that Urban Collage did the examples.
Which would be covered, okay.
Yes, so that kind of covered it a little more specifically, but that was a generality of what we wanted to do is to bring the buildings up, so it's definitely a part of that.
Gotcha. And then my, I think my last thing, oh, yeah, my last thing was, was there consideration given to conservation of green space with the larger size parcels? Is there any discussion for that?
Other than having amenity areas based on the square footage of a development, we didn't really talk about conservation areas. I mean, part of the beginning and when we did, the committee was, we did a survey of what's undeveloped thus far and obviously, there are some areas we could foresee to be redeveloped, especially across from Walmart, some of the older buildings, but there really isn't that many large areas to be developed along the corridor. So, we didn't look at conserving property, other than having certain size developments have an amenity area that could have open space component.
Okay, and that would be one of the recommended changes to the check.
Yes, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Joe, you have anything?
I'm good.
I've got a question and it may not be for tonight, so if it's not, we just put it on a sticky note, but we've heard some things with our earlier presentation of branding. We've heard from John that he was thinking, or the committee was thinking, that branding, no, you're in this area. And this has come up before, but we've got to come up with a better name for, than just Highway nine. And what are the processes of going through in like naming the road, Highway nine? You know, yes, it's State Route nine, but calling it something, you know, Milton Parkway would be great, I guess it'd have to be the new Milton Parkway instead of the old, but, you know, something like that. Is that doable? You know, to help, you know, give this, you know, like Crab Apple, instead of saying the intersection of, you know, Crab Apple Road and SR three seventy-two, doesn't have the same, you know, sounds like this. You know, as far as branding this area, what is there, what's their way, what's the means to name a state route, a name that we want to name it?
I'm guessing you don't like Coming Highway.
Not really.
It wasn't high on the list.
I'm going for New Milton Parkway, or renaming, you know, I mean, I think that's something that would help brand this area a little bit. And again, if it is, I don't think it's for tonight, it's not for this committee, but it's in that same vein that maybe anyone to, you know, look into at some point.
Can I make a comment? We actually did address that issue in the very beginning of our committee, yes. I think that was part of the problem is that we couldn't really come up with one. I think there was a lot of good ideas, but it was kind of a bigger apple than we could bite off of trying to figure out exactly what it would be. But definitely, the committee was of the same mind, that we felt like Highway nine was just not snazzy enough, it wasn't, didn't give us the kind of branding that we wanted. So, definitely, we're open to that.
From a CPAC standpoint, CPAC has called this entire area, character area, Deerfield. So, we've tried to steer away from Highway nine in preferences. So, this, the entire area of the overlay addresses under the new comprehensive planning plan, we refer to as Deerfield.
Are there avenues to do this that are not, you know, worse than changing the speed limit?
I've seen them go the other direction where they, like South Atlanta Street, for instance, they've tried to rename that to State Route nine or Highway nine to get a consistent naming all the way through there, to go back the other direction and name a portion of it something different. I honestly don't know. I don't know. I can certainly ask the question.
I think it's worth asking because Highway nine just doesn't sound very pretty.
No.
I'd say we just put up new signs and ask for forgiveness later.
I think, John, did you, were you going to say something from the committee's standpoint?
We came up with about six or seven or several different names. We never voted on it, but I think the whole committee was leaning toward the idea, if there was any way we could, we'd want a rename.
Okay, that's all I have. Mr. Mayor, you got any questions?
I'm in charge again.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'll just, I'll need the power back.
Any other question, Bill? You addressed parking requirements and pervious parking spaces. I think that's one of my biggest issues. What's it going to take to modify our requirements for parking, especially in these big boxes? And what comes to mind, of course, is well, Sembler's and Walmarts. You have a building and it has a footprint of one acre and it seems like you've got fifty acres of parking out there that's never used. Is that a discussion that we need to get into later on?
Well, let me pick that one up a little bit. It is probably part of a much larger revisit to our parking ordinance entirely, but one of the things that we can do is enact some maximum parking allowances, such that, you know, if you want to go over the maximum, then you do do that via pervious materials or some unique type of paving system or at least all-weather system. And then, again, some of the latest in planning is, you know, not to specify any parking at all, which I don't know that I'm ready to go that far, but allowing some flexibility in kind of a range of parking. So, if they provide within this range, assuming they're, particularly if they're in a commercial area that's kind of, that can have shared parking, that they can have this range of parking spaces versus, again, having a minimum number that's typically a pretty high number in comparison to what's actually being used out there. But, yeah, we will have to do a kind of a whole revisit, whole cloth revisit to our parking ordinance and that's going to take a little time. So, that's probably one of the items that would be a little later on the list. We're going to try to hit some of those things that are quick and easy first.
Do you think this could be part of the redevelopment discussion?
Absolutely.
Particularly with, I'm not sure, you know, how soon Walmart would be redeveloped or any of these other places up and down Milton Parkway?
New Milton Parkway.
New Milton Parkway. Trying to get away from the heat sink issue of all of these masses of asphalt out there. I think that's an important part of this whole design concept around New Milton Parkway. I'd like to see, I'd like to see more discussion on that and I'd like to see us headed in that direction.
Yes, sir, we definitely will. Thank you.
Julie?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks very much to the committee and staff. This has obviously been extremely important and will continue to be, as was noted, it's a living document. Just a couple of quick thoughts. One, I'm assuming that coordination with the transportation master plan and Kim Lee Horn and those folks would parlay into the possible renaming of Highway nine as well as into Terry Hirsch Park within the CPAC document. I know that there would have been some discussion on it about Deerfield, but also one of those areas being referenced as Bethany or Bethany Bend, but just that whole branding incorporating what's also been worked on and hopefully still underway within the transportation master plan. One question, I know that in the past, under both Fulton County as well as other cities, there have been big box ordinances that have been pursued whereby there's a maximum of how large a particular building or footprint would be, so that you don't end up necessarily with more eighty thousand and hundred thousand square foot buildings. I would just suggest that we at least contemplate that.
We do have that already.
Let me rephrase it then maybe, is to reevaluate our big box ordinance because a lot of the original big box ordinance that we adopted was still a pretty big box. And so, as I think about the input from the committee and the input that we continue to hear from citizens as well as from developers, is that when we can help brand the area, one way to do that is through more sensitive design, including the actual size of the footprint. And I think that the big box ordinance we currently have in the books is like eighty thousand or maybe even more than that. So, I would recommend that we take a look at that, determine, are there some things that we might want to do to tweak it, because that obviously is one of the largest impacts when you have a footprint that's not divided up. The other, I would absolutely agree with, impervious surfaces. Hopefully, that's going to be something that we look at, sooner or not later. To your point, percentage, so to your point, if there was a range, but then a percentage that would be a required impervious surface and/or that could be that alternative, whether it be gravel or these other methods that are out there. One thing I didn't hear, but I know we've talked about it in some of our other ordinances in terms of recycling, with new development, there had been this discussion, some discussion about having a required recycling area for our commercial areas and that right now, a development standard doesn't require that. So, in addition to the traditional waste hauler, I would just recommend that we start to look at a development standard that requires that recycling because it's obviously required as the city. So, hopefully, we could dovetail our development standards to incorporate that, just another suggestion. Along those lines, thinking about LEED certified, not so much requirements, but suggestions. I know that from a cost perspective, we're not going to require it, but some of the standards that are out there that we could encourage, whether they be green roofs, whether they be this impervious, whether it be additional methods, again, we, maybe not a requirement, but especially since we as a city are also pursuing the Green City designation through the Atlanta Region Commission. A suggestion would be that maybe we pull some of that language and see about incorporating that. Again, it would demonstrate that we are moving obviously from one document into the other. Again, it doesn't have to be a requirement, but hopefully, we could have some of the language that we're including in terms of becoming a green city, even in this area for Highway nine. In terms of required green space, I think it was Councilmember Tart, you asked this question, I had written it down earlier as well. I'm not sure why we wouldn't want to require a percentage of green space. We've done it in the Birmingham master plan, we've done it in the Crab Apple master plan. I think we need to require a percentage of green space, even if it's for developments of X size, but I think to miss that opportunity is a missed opportunity, especially when our other master plans have required it. I don't know why we wouldn't want to have a similar perspective for Highway nine. Maybe the percentage is different, but again, I just ask for that consideration. Screening, I noted, I don't know what page it is, I can flip it back open, talking about screening, it says that chain-link fences, even though they would be vinyl clad, would be allowed along golf courses, play areas, et cetera. Again, I would ask us to at least consider whether or not that vinyl clad, if we want that to be allowable, if it's seen from the street. I know that in our other overlays, if the vinyl clad is allowed, it still has to be buffered and I just didn't see that language and it may be there. So, I'm just trying to go through it so we don't have to belabor the point, but at least to say, gee, if it's required in our other overlays, wouldn't we want to parlay that and bring it into this as well?
I believe the ordinance already states that, I mean, other than, I guess, with the, those examples, that we don't allow any kind of fencing if it's seen from the road.
That's what concerned me because it said chain-link fences are allowed for golf courses and for play areas and it didn't have any language about allowance, whether it be seen from the road or not. So, I just wanted to make sure that we suddenly weren't loosening up that requirement.
Actually, it does say here chain-link fencing is not allowed if it can be seen during any month of the year from the following street, so.
And maybe that list is an exhaustive list, but to me, if it suddenly says, as long as it's only seen from those, and I did see that, thank you, is that there are other streets that aren't named. And so, I don't know why one street wouldn't have importance.
Well, that's for the entire overlay district.
Right, but if those are an inclusive, an all-inclusive list, great, short of comparing that to our maps, it just struck me that there might be some roads where we'd still want to have those clad, fencing. want to have those clad, fencing buffered. So that was my only thought there. Carter, you mentioned last week about lights, mast arms.
Mast arms? Yes, ma'am.
Does this incorporate your thinking and the other research you were doing?
Well, the next discussion will roll into that.
Okay.
And so I think in this particular document, there's a reference to signal mast arms as required or as provided by the Public Works Department, maybe on page twenty, twenty-one is, is that reference.
Again, I just know we talked about it as recently as last week, so I wanted to make sure that whatever this final document is incorporates that with regards to mast arms. Detention facilities, I know on Highway Nine, we've historically required as a matter of conditions, earthen structures. And again, without reading it chapter and verse, I just wanted to make sure that we were still capturing that desired design because this language didn't seem to expressly state it. It may be intended, but again, as your-
I think it's intended. I mean, it's, that was a situation or-
There's a description in there.
I, I just, the language wasn't as explicit as maybe we've had in some of our conditions for zonings. The only reason I bring it up is to make sure that we capture that since I think we've all given that some thought.
I think the intent of the committee was to always have it, if it was above ground, to-
To meet that standard.
To either be totally out of sight and if it wasn't, it would be a natural type facility. So we, we haven't wordsmithed it all, and that, that will definitely be an inclusion into-
And that's one reason I bring it up is I think sometimes if it's too general, we may miss that opportunity to be more specific as we have been. And then that would be my final question, is when would you want any suggestions from us back to you and the committee as you finalize the document?
I think Lynn and I were speaking about trying to do a resolution sometime in December, so like in the next, you know, fifteen, twenty-one days, fifteen days, any other suggestions you may have.
But just thank you, and thank you so much for the committee and the staff, and obviously, great stuff. And it's wonderful that it's a living document because obviously different things will arise over time. Thank you very much.
Chris, Karen?
Yeah, I just had a couple of quick questions. Number one, looking on pages six and seven, even with the building placement, it shows some pretty massive parking lots without the parking islands that we have typically required. And I'm assuming that we will be still requiring, even if it's in the back of a, a building, we're still gonna be requiring the islands?
Correct, yes.
Okay, well, the pictures just didn't show any, any trees in these big parking lots. I wanted to make sure that-
We could probably have that fixed.
Yeah, make sure that we got our trees in our parking lots, so. I do like the idea that the fencing is not all just completely standard, that you do have a little bit of variety in it, all of the color is. And I, I think we gotta find some way that we don't have parking that is needed for between Thanksgiving and Christmas all year round. So, and it looks like that everything that's built, the parking is designed for the holiday season between Thanksgiving and Christmas. And it's a shame that, you know, the rest of the year, all you have is asphalt there. So if there's a way we can do that, I highly encourage.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Robin. I certainly appreciate everyone's time on this, and as was stated earlier, this is very important, so we're all excited moving forward. If anybody needs to go to the restroom real quick, feel free.
I think we should get Alpharetta.
Put him right there on his foot.
Send the popularity.
Oh, Lord. They're magic dots.
Yeah, if you don't mind, it's all right.
So what?
Okay. Well, we can at least announce the next, I think this next item is Carter, so we got a discussion on traffic signal mast arms.
And this kind of rolls into the previous discussion. The current code, as it's written, says that all mast arms used shall be the G dot standard steel galvanized mast arms, not of a decorative nature. The last signal that we did down at Deerfield and State Route Nine, sorry, New Milton Highway-
Parkway.
It's Parkway, sorry. Was zoned to a decorative mast arm, and the signal prior to that, I think, at Bethany Bend and Cogburn, was painted to a black with a decorative skirt. So my gut told me that the standard galvanized mast arm was not something that we wanted to see in the city of Milton. And so the question was with this is whether or not we want to move forward with a revision to the code or a revision to the design standards in the overlay districts to identify a specific type of mast arm to be used throughout the city. My preference would be to standardize the equipment that we have. Currently, we have fourteen signals throughout the city, and we have a little bit of everything. We've got five signals that are of the span wire type, and these run the gamut of the posts being steel galvanized. We've got painted steel out there, we've got wooden poles out there. So there is a wide variety with the, even with the span wire, of the type of signal and the decorative type poles that we could use if that was a direction we wanted to go. We have one galvanized mast arm that meets the code right now, and that's at the Cogburn Web Intersection. And so that's what would be required by code. If we were to use mast arms, that's what we would be looking at. The other alternatives to that would be a painted or a powder coated type. The black signals that we've got along old New Milton Parkway and Bethany Bend and Cogburn Road are, are black painted or powder coated type style mast arms. The one at Bethany Bend and Cogburn, we've added a decorative skirt along that to kind of dress those particular signals up. And then finally, the, the full decorative mast arm, we've got four of those. They are all the same type of mast arms. They are a smooth mast arm with a fluted pole, and then the luminary up at the top. So we've, we've got a little bit of everything. If you were to look at the costs on those, these would be generic costs. Maybe the more important column here is the difference. Cost for the mast arms would vary based on length of the mast arm. The costs here are prices that our contractor gave us for a standard, small forty-five foot span mast arm. And so just the, the jump from span wire to galvanized steel mast arm runs us about forty-five thousand additional dollars. To take that on up to a powder coated or painted steel adds about ten thousand dollars to that. And then all the way up to the decorative would be about ninety-five thousand. That, that's the price above what the span wire would be.
Now, is that per intersection?
Per intersection.
Per, so how many mast arms would that be?
Four.
Four, okay.
If it's configured correctly, you can get away with two with a mat, two mast arms on each pole, but that's really dependent on each individual intersection and how it's oriented. And so I guess what I was hoping to take away tonight was whether or not we were satisfied with the way the current ordinance reads with the galvanized steel mast arm, or whether or not we wanted to move forward with a revision to that ordinance to account for either painted or a fully decorative, or if we wanted to look at decorative in certain overlay districts and maybe not others. But just some direction on where we wanted to go with that so that we could get the ordinance to read the way we want it to read.
Yeah, I guess the, obviously the question, you know, there's a lot of cost difference. And in my personal opinion, you know, in some areas, the decorative look really good, but some areas, they may look really out of place. So, you know, you mentioned maybe in some of the overlays and this and that, but could that, would that work? Pretty typical that in certain overlays we have, the more decorative and whatnot. If, and again, I'm not saying that we, we need to have, you know, we don't know what the council wants if we wanted to use all one or whatever, but my personal opinion, you may not want to have one standard light base that you have to use everywhere. So I'll kind of open it up.
How many actual lights do we have in the whole city of Milton?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Mm-hmm. And then-
Firstly, I like the decorative. I think that your intersections, unfortunately, we spend an awful lot of time at those lights, a lot more than I would like to spend at times. And I just really, I think the difference between a galvanized steel and a decorative is worth the money in the long run. How often in the maintenance of the two of them, is there, is there a difference in the maintenance going four or five years?
About the only maintenance would be painting. So every seven to ten years, maybe, depending on where the signal is, how much sunshine it gets, they'll start to oxidize and we'll come back and repaint them. Painting a standard intersection, seven to ten thousand dollars.
Personally, I like the, as few poles as we have, I like the decorative.
Well, but I guess we got to keep in mind, because these are, fourteen we have in existence, we're really talking moving forward. Julie?
Yes, Mayor, I would concur. I think it's important. I think that when we look at our overlays, it's obviously been a discussion with citizens and committees even before we were a city. And I think that it, it does make a statement, and it's another way to differentiate Milton from other areas. And I think the incremental cost, it's, it's has value, and, and I think we do need to have a standard. I sure appreciate you bringing it forward so that we can standardize it. And the other thing to remember is that sometimes these mast arms have had a shared cost. I mean, even with the school boards, two of those that you showed were down off of School Drive, I believe, at Freemanville and at Birmingham.
That's correct.
And so for us to miss the opportunity to have a standard that does enhance, especially when we have a cost that can be shared, depending on where it's being placed, I do think it's important, and we've continued to hear that from citizens. So I would support having a standard. And to the mayor's point, you know, there may be an area where a standard wouldn't apply, and maybe we could look to see what those would be, but I, I think in most of the overlay areas-
And that was my point, I was saying the overlay areas.
Right. That you'd want to have a standard.
But maybe out in the middle of a real rural area, it may not, it may look out of place. But I'm, I just want to hear what the council says, so that's good input. Bill, what's your thoughts?
Well, I think span wire certainly has a use in some locations. And galvanized may also. I guess my question is, between powder coated and decorative, and I assume the decorative ones are powder coated or-
Yes, sir.
Finish, durable finish like that. But the powder coated really is just a plainer, slicker cross section. In the decorative, you're talking about a fluted column with a slick mast arm.
That's right.
So really, it's, it's all in the, it's in the mast rather than in the arm. And you're looking at ten thousand dollars per copy to get that fluted appearance in?
Oh, forty-
Difference between the powder coated and the decorative is forty, forty thousand in intersections.
The other difference we have in our decorative set, we have an inventory. They, they do have a luminaire on top.
That's the, yeah.
So you've got the light that goes all the way up versus the other mast arms. See if I've got a picture. The other mast arms that we've got that are just the black, don't carry that. But I think a lot of those are in places that already have streetlights in place. So that could be an option that is dependent on the location.
How much does that add to what you call the powder coated mast?
That's a good question. I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
It's probably something to consider. But in the, what you call the powder coated mast arms, do they include the skirt?
They do not.
Okay, so you're getting, we're getting the skirt plus the fluted.
Plus the top light.
Plus the top light.
The skirt, the skirt runs about five thousand per intersection for the four mast arms, I think. Five to seven thousand.
I've got to imagine that for new business.
Sixteen hundred bucks. Well, that, that might be worth it.
Bethany Bend-Cogburn.
You know, I've, I sit at these intersections also. It doesn't make it flip to me if they're fluted, if they're slick. You know, just as long as the cycle time isn't more than thirty seconds. I'd like to see the incremental cost differential between putting a skirt on and then putting a light mast on top of it.
But I think from your numbers, Carter, what you're saying, you're talking about a non-fluted pole then, Bill? And adding a mast, the light on the top and a skirt versus having a fluted pole? So we know it's ten thousand dollars upgrade if you have the fluted pole, decorative and the light and the skirt. But so it's obviously going to be somewhere in between. And you were saying that a skirt's about five thousand dollars?
I think we paid about, or they paid about five to seven thousand dollars for the skirts that were added at Bethany Bend-Cogburn.
That's all for it.
And about how much would the light be on top of them?
I'm not sure how much it would be to add a luminaire to that.
I don't care about the fluted poles, but I think it's a much nicer look.
Okay, you know, and again, as we go across and get everybody's opinion on it, you know, my only thing would be, I'd really want to think through it and get more input and info as far as if we were just picking one, just because I think there may be some areas that, you know, that, that it'd be better to have the decorative and maybe some with, you know, maybe the, I do like the black better than the galvanized. I think they look better. But anyways, that's my opinion is, I'm not set on just picking one, but maybe a combination between the two or something like that.
Variations of one.
I would go along with the minimum of the powder coated and then perhaps the more decorative and appropriate overlays or areas.
Yeah, I just, how often do we add traffic lights in the city? And what is the real budget impact and opportunity cost? Fifty thousand dollars in intersection. You know, I like the look of the real expensive light as well. But, you know, if we're weighing spending an additional fifty thousand dollars on something that, you know, I have to drive by for ten seconds a day versus something that's more important to the city, I'd want to know what that is. So, so to me, I'd have to put that in the context of, you know, how many lights are we going to put in next year? And what are we weighing that against?
Well, we've currently got one in design, which would be at the State Route one forty and New Providence Road. We have a potential that will be evaluated at Bethany, I'm sorry, Hopewell Francis Cogburn. And then the existing traffic signal at Bethany Bend and Cogburn will be reconstructed. And the way we've currently budgeted is that the current, the existing mast arms out there would be reused at the new location, so.
And these, we're talking, all these would be under the city's responsibility as far as cost? What you just mentioned, correct? Even the one at one forty, you know, the upgrade, the upgrade cost would bear, the city would bear that, correct?
That's right, that's right, yes, sir.
It's a DOT project. And then obviously on some private developments, you know, that would be borne by the development itself too. But we do have a few coming up, and, you know, Joe's got a good point too, that's, that's a lot of money.
Don't get me wrong, I like the look, it's just, you know.
Well, and it does seem that we have, you know, some that are coming up that the city would bear the burden of the cost. But I think it's also important to point out that most of the signals that have been installed, at least since I've been on this board, have been the, borne by the developer. So, you know-
That's right.
Like the ones right there in front of us, I believe, was installed by the similar development. And there are others that are high cost on Highway nine as well.
New Milton Parkway.
New Milton Parkway, thank you.
We just keep calling it that.
That will be in the minutes. So if the-
We're putting that sign out there.
All right. I mean, I would, I would agree that, you know, no, the, the black is what I, what I would go for. The paint, the powder coated steel, the black there and the decorative. I'm not necessarily married totally to doing the decorative. I believe decorative has some merit, especially in maybe Crab Apple and maybe Birmingham, the Highway nine overlay. Kind of called it Milton overlay, New Milton overlay. And maybe internal areas, maybe do the powdered or the painted steel, the, the black. I think that's what we're looking at right there, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Well, tell me, tell me if I'm wrong, if I can try to compile, if I had to go in a direction. What I'm hearing is possibly maybe all of them black. But then possibly in the overlay areas, the Highway nine Deerfield area, the, or New Milton area, and Crab Apple, Birmingham, whatnot. Maybe go with the decorative with the lamp on it. Maybe it's an opportunity to, you know, if it were cheaper, to not have to use the fluted pole but have the lamp and all that. I don't think people, you know, sitting in a stoplight are going to see that more than they're going to see the shape and the lamp. You know, maybe that might be a little bit cheap, but that might be something we look at. But the staff, did you guys hear any, if you're looking for a direction is-
Well, that's what I heard. And what I heard is the galvanized mast arm steel that we have in the current ordinance is not one that we want to see. So we could put together a-
Could, can everybody live with if you looked at it in that direction, that we want to do the minimum, have the black mast? And then the-
The overlay areas have the decorative.
The decorative, and then maybe look at a-
Well, maybe, could I restate it?
Yeah.
Start out with what you call the powder coated mast as a standard. Then in overlay areas, possibly consider what you'd call upgrades to it. That standard mast. One would be the skirt or the kilt or whatever you're going to put on it. And then the light fixture would be another upgrade to it. Depending on where these are specifically located.
Like I said, like this one with your picture, you've already got a street light above it, so would you necessarily want to duplicate that?
Right.
Oh, but I like the skirt on it.
But skirt.
Right, right. Start out with a standard like that and then just provide upgrades to it depending on where it falls in the city. If it's up overlay area.
Well, yeah, I think that we're still almost back to the powder coated or black be the standard. The overlay areas have the upgrade, which could be up to the decorative arms that you've got shown here and priced. But maybe look at it to where there might be an option to go with the smooth pole and maybe a less expensive skirt or whatever, but still have the light and whatnot. So I guess, does that make sense? It's kind of going backwards what you said, Bill, but that's what I had said earlier.
I was proposing that the standard would be the smooth profile mast.
And that's what we're saying here, the powder coated.
Right.
That'd be the standard everywhere.
Right.
And the, the overlay districts would either be somewhere between an upgrade up to the decorative arm. We'd have to figure that out.
Well, adding, adding to that standard, a mast or a light fixture. But I wouldn't consider a fluted mast. I don't think it's worth the-
What about the skirt?
Well, that'd be an upgrade.
Yeah.
Right, but that'd be on the, the overlay districts.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, we're going to have to come up with something that's pretty firm so that-
Yeah, what I think-
So they don't know what to expect.
We ought to leave it up to them where they're going to propose these upgraded masts and mast arms. If it does fall in or near an overlay area, I think that's what the proposal ought to, from staff should be. Starting out with a standard.
Okay.
Well, whatever, I think we're on, we're really saying the same thing. But does everybody agree that for the base standard, we'd like the black powder coated?
At a minimum, yes.
Yes, no galvanized.
Joe, you got any? Yeah, all right.
I could go along with that, I guess.
It's just, if you look at everybody's hair that wants the black ones or the galvanized ones.
What, what do you mean, Joe? I'm confused.
I think he's talking about that.
That's why you like the strand lash, right? No, if we go with the, with the black standard, the powder coated as our standard, we do the upgrade in the overlay areas. And what I was thinking, maybe there's an option you could look into rather than the decorative arm that, that you've got, that we have a few of, and that maybe there's one that has a base to it, but not a fluted pole, but the same light fixture. And, you know, maybe it's less expensive and-
You're going to add on the-
If everybody likes it, you know, we're not making the decision right now, but if everybody, but in general, is that everybody good with that?
Yeah.
I think having a standard is really helpful, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Carter.
All right, I'll let the city clerk call the next item.
Next item is further discussion on RZ ten oh four. Approval amendment, the city of Milton zoning ordinance to create a required distance for convenience stores and service stations from residential uses. Zoning districts within the Northwest Fulton Overlay and State Route nine Overlay districts. Chapter sixty-four, Division five, and chapter sixty-four, Division six. Ms. Lynn Tully.
As you all may remember, we discussed about a month ago some potential buffers for gas station uses from residential uses and zones. In doing so, we found that it didn't really suffice for what we thought we were looking for. It didn't really meet the goal that we thought we were looking for. So we were asked to go back and kind of rethink and come back before you with some potential options. And during that time, we were asking for some additional direction. What we've done in, in the interim, and what we're here for tonight really is for some more direction. Because we, we looked at it, and the more we looked at it, the more we thought, well, this could really go probably ten or fifteen different ways. But we wanted to kind of narrow down what it was that you were really looking to protect your citizens from. So we looked at, we started with kind of the basic condition, one of the conditions that's, that's put on almost every commercial zoning now, that includes excluding specific items. Now, I can go through and read through this list, but those items are, are, those items are uses that in some cases generate traffic and impact our transportation network. In some cases, they are potential maybe safety hazards, hazardous materials users. In some cases, they're purely an aesthetic issue. We, we don't want to see seasonal roadside stands in some places. In other places, they're just truly objectionable uses. And those are things that, you know, fortune tellers is on the list, pawn shops are on the list. They're things that, you know, typically are kind of your objectionable uses. Based on this list, again, like I say, we're still not necessarily narrowing it down to what it is that, that the council's really trying to protect. And if, if we can define that a little bit better tonight, I can go back and write ordinances that, that meet that. But it's, it's honestly, it's been a little difficult. I guess maybe one of the questions we should think instead of excluding all these other things is where would these uses be appropriated in Milton, if at all? And if not at all, then we need to adjust our zoning code that way, so.
I guess where I, what I would, where I'm not sure is, you know, is this really an issue of just picking one use and excluding that or putting these requirements on? Or is there several uses? And, you know, I thought, what if you just said, you know, C one or whatever, you have these buffers. But then I guess you get to a point where you couldn't do it because you're going to ultimately have a residential piece of property bought up. So that, I guess that was my question, is, you know, how do we just pick, say, convenience stores or places that have gas pumps and put the requirements on versus, you know, then we'll say dry cleaners or, you know, moving on to some of the other things you said. If that's the case. And then the other thing I, I just would, would want to see is, and I know we got some examples when we were discussing of, you know, what other cities and jurisdictions do so that if we choose to do something, it would be within line of what's the, you know, or somewhere in the industry, so.
And I think one issue is the fact that we do still have parcels that are, are zoned something other than commercial that are in the middle of commercial districts because they just have not been rezoned yet and have not been used yet. So that makes it a little complicated when you're having to look, look at restrictions based on what is adjacent. Because it may be something that clearly is in a commercial area and it's on the land use plan as commercial, but the properties hadn't been sold yet, so it hadn't been rezoned yet, so it's still, you know, zoned AG one even though it's not really fit for AG one type zoning. So I think that it does make it a little bit more complicated is because it's not like the whole areas are already zoned or being rezoned or are being redeveloped.
Yeah, Julie?
I, I think a lot of it comes back to buffers relative to the residential area. And Lynn, as you mentioned, intensity of use, objectionable uses, not that are objectionable to this council, but that are objectionable to the very residences where those particular uses would be located. And I do think that that's ultimately where we started to grapple with this issue initially was that there were certain uses that had a greater intensity of use and the proximity to the residences wasn't enough. And I think that that's where we began. It wasn't to say that you couldn't have a residence next to a C one area, but that certain uses were of higher intensity. And therefore, that buffer needed to perhaps be greater in order to protect the citizens' interest. And I think that that's what brought us to the original proposal from staff, that we look at a larger buffer between, as an example, gas stations and residential homes.
See, could you mind if I break in?
No.
That was my same point too, but it's, it went further than just, say, a gas station.
Just gas stations.
Because, you know, how do we rank things and say, you know, well, we need this much buffer for, say, a gas station and this and this? But then a little bit less for this and then down to the standard.
Well, I think part of it has to do maybe with traffic, part of it has to do with, and to your point, hazardous material. I mean, obviously gasoline's a hazardous material. And, and I think that, that citizens have helped to determine what things become objectionable. I mean, I think that in hearing from citizens, it's what our citizens are saying are objectionable. I mean, I think that in hearing from citizens, it's what our citizens are saying are objectionable. And even if we went back to some earlier situations where we grappled with this a little bit, but it wasn't so much on gas stations, and one of them was whether or not we needed to perhaps look at alcohol sales next to parks. Does alcohol and a park necessarily belong together? I mean, there's different perspectives. It's not to say that we shouldn't have the sale of alcohol in Milton. It's just to say that in some cases, there might be some parcels where maybe that would be considered objectionable to some of our residents. So beyond gas stations, beyond, you know, liquor stores being immediately adjacent to certain things, I think that that's the content of the discussion that we started down. Obviously, some of those other objectionable uses that are excluded, you know, have to do with adult bookstores and have to do with sale of pornography. I mean, there's some obvious objectionable uses that I think we already carve out in terms of being non-permitted. I don't know if that helps, but I think that we started down the path of how do we increase the buffer, not eliminating certain businesses, but how do we increase the buffer for certain businesses that had a higher intensity of use based on citizens' definitions and that perhaps have the involvement of some hazardous materials like gasoline. And so I don't know if that...
Well, let's go on down the line. And then Ken, I want to, once we hear from everybody, get your opinion, you know, legality and, you know, what happens if we just per se had, you know, right now made a, or wanted to move in a direction to, say, just convenience stores and gas stations, we changed the buffer, but we haven't for another business or whatever. Give us the legal side, Bill.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, and I like the idea and your suggestion, that we look at other potential uses and that we, because there are some parcels, and I think this may go along some of what Councilmember Thurman was saying, is that even separate from those parcels that are in commercial areas currently, we have some parcels that are definitively in our residential areas that happen to be commercial. And I think we need to proactively look forward to helping to protect those residences from what could come as a rezoning eventually. And again, it's not preventing business. It's just saying that we realize and recognize proactively that there are some parcels that if certain uses were to locate there, would be incongruent with what the residences of Milton expect.
I understand, that's why I'm saying it. So it's a big picture too. It's not just, you know...
Right, it's not just one issue in one corner.
Bill?
Include roadside stands with velvet Elvis Presley wall hangings?
I guess it depends on if you like velvet hangings or Elvis.
This is a tough one, I think. And I really haven't come to a clear decision on this. But we lived in Peachtree City years ago, and this keeps coming back to me, especially since we've been going through this comprehensive plan. And it's creating, what they did down there was create small commercial nodes throughout the city. And it might include a gas station, a little convenience store, maybe a drugstore, shoe store, something like that. But these, these commercial nodes were surrounded by, you know, residential areas. And I think that's what creates or helps more to create a sense of community is providing services. So you're not driving, you know, 15 miles across town to go to a grocery store like that. And I think Milton has that same potential of being, as we evolve and grow into this comprehensive plan, I think there's opportunities out there to create these small commercial nodes throughout the city. So then buffers become an issue. You know, how much of a buffer? It's, you're not gonna please everybody. But I guess you have to look at the future use of land out here and what it could really be. And I don't think we need to, in my opinion, I don't think we need to concentrate all of the commercial up on Crab Apple Road or New Milton Parkway or Arnold Mill Road. I think there's other opportunities out there. So I don't, I can't get to the point where, you know, we need to set a specific setback for this type of facility.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
Everybody said it is a confusing issue. And Ken, my question can probably go back to when it's your turn, but I remember at some point we were hearing something else of revision. And I think it might have been for industrial or manufacturing. And I think you said that you've got to allow for some of it or else if your ordinance does not allow for it to be anywhere in your city, then it might not be as defensible. And you can answer it, you know, at the end. The other thing I have with this, if we were to go with something, whether it changes our buffers or not, and we need to, because it seems to me that there's been confusion with the definitions of convenience stores and service stations and this, that, and the other, that we might want to spell those out pretty easy and clear going forward if we do something with this.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, I mean, this is, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, and I still can't come up with a great definition of how to, you know, understand the complexities of it. But all I know is that, you know, when we listen to the citizens that had the biggest stake in the matter, which were the ones that lived closest to, you know, properties such as this, you know, that they had issues with, you know, what they were gonna open up their door and step onto from their front porch. And, you know, the problem in putting that into words and making it fit within our ordinances is a significant one because, you know, look at all this, you know, buffer language, this, that, and the other, and you try to make it all add up. But in certain cases, it just doesn't add up. And, you know, case in point would be, you know, our recent deal with T-Mobile and cell towers. Every single one of those cell towers was within the, what we had defined, but something about it wasn't right. Okay? Opening up your back porch and looking at a, you know, 300 foot or 120 foot cell tower just wasn't the right thing for some folks. So it's a complicated issue. And I don't have any idea how to make the language work right, other than to, you know, to say that it's something that's gotta be, you know, done on a case-by-case basis. But I know that's very weak and it doesn't fit into, you know, what our ordinances are supposed to be about or what zoning is supposed to be about. So, you know, I'm at a loss for how to fix that. I just know it's a challenge.
Okay. Alan?
Yeah, it is a challenge. But as you pointed out, Joe, the citizens seem to be pretty absolute in their wanting certain uses, there to be buffers with certain uses. And I think what we've been presented with that makes this gas station, service station, convenience store, whatever, whatever the term is, and whatever we've been presented with in the past, it's always been that. We haven't been presented with some other kind of use that has been objectionable to the citizens. It's been gas stations and that type of thing. We had it at Deerfield and Highway Nine back in the similar development. The citizens, you know, came out and they had certain things that they were okay with with that development, certain things they wanted enhanced, but they absolutely did not want a gas station. Same thing at the corner of Highway Nine and Bethany Bend. And I think it does go back to intensity of use. I think it's more than just a gas station. I think that's just what's been presented to us thus far in the plans. But I think it does speak to the intensity of use. You know, Bill talked about Peachtree City, and I think, you know, there are commercial nodes in Peachtree City, but that was also a planned community right from the get-go. And it also is enhanced by 90 some odd miles of golf cart trails where people can, you know, get on their golf carts and hop to the nearest place. That would not be the case here. We have to hop in a car and drive to the nearest commercial node, which would be a lot different than on a golf cart. So, you know, I don't know the argument in that regard. But I do believe that if there's some way we can look at other municipalities and how they've dealt with this, I know that there have been some mentioned in Cherokee County. There are perhaps some other examples. Maybe they are specific to gas stations, maybe not. Maybe they have more of a buffer than we feel comfortable making here. But I do think that the citizens have been loud and clear in their want to establish some sort of enhanced buffer for these high-intensity uses. So I don't want this, I really don't want this issue to die. I'm not sure what the answer is. I don't have the silver bullet. But I think we do need to continue to look at this area and figure out, is there something we can do to enhance buffers between certain high-intensity uses and residential, especially since we have these, this going on in Milton where we've got high-intensity uses potentially in close proximity to residential.
I think I've got some suggestions, but Ken, just give us your legal side of what we're talking about, what you think.
Councilmembers, I mean, just hearing your dialogue, I know it's a tough and challenging issue. At the end of the day, from my perspective, it's a planning decision. I mean, that's what you're doing as you're talking about various performance standards and buffering to set forth your vision of planning for the city. To Councilmember Hewitt's question to me, I think the context I was making when I had said that earlier had to do, quite frankly, with adult entertainment. And I think what I was trying to tell you...
For billboards. I know it was with billboards too.
Yeah, it was with, when you start talking about speech and First Amendment sort of protections, I think the case law's pretty clear. You do have to accommodate it in the city or in the jurisdiction in some regard. And I think, I may have been responding to a question by Councilmember Lusk some weeks ago, I don't think that these sorts of businesses are gonna fall within that sort of protected class. So I think you're gonna have basically the lowest level from a legality standpoint of scrutiny to your decision. Now, I want you to have a reason, though, why you do it and to be able to articulate your rationale for why you would be singling out a convenience store or a service station and then imposing that buffer on them. And I was, while y'all were talking, I was sort of jotting down some things to think about. Aesthetics is a legitimate governmental interest, safety, health, property values, density, just generic planning, and then convenience for your citizens. And of course, one of the Achilles' heels that a council will fall into is that while you can do something, whether you should do it or not, is another matter. And of course, if you do this, one risk you run is, of course, you may make some citizens angry from a convenience standpoint. They just don't have these sorts of facilities anymore. On the other hand, you're trying to balance that with respect to concerns your citizens are making that there needs to be some sort of buffering between these sorts of uses and residential. So I guess my point at the end of the day is, is I don't find this to be the type of a use that carries with it any sort of enhanced constitutional protection such that I think you have a lot of latitude. However, in making your decision, I think you do need to articulate for the record and for your citizens why we're doing it. And then I think we need to figure out what is a reasonable buffer to justify the concern you're trying to fix. Certainly, you could decide there's a problem and then impose a solution that's so draconian that it really sort of dwarfs the problem you were trying to fix in the first place. And of course, then you could impose a requirement that doesn't do nearly enough, and so you've really not done anything. So it's, I wish I could give you sort of a magic bullet. There isn't one. My advice to you would be to identify what you're trying to, what problem you're trying to fix, justify that, and then try to blend it into, perhaps if Lynn can bring back what maybe some other jurisdictions are doing, and perhaps that'll give you some guidance as to what may have worked and not worked in other jurisdictions. But your discretion on this is wide.
Let me make a suggestion and see if this can, you know, from what I'm taking from the interest of the council, the citizens, applicants, looking at the big picture. You know, again, I'm not at all opposed to having a buffer requirement or increasing it, say, for gas stations or convenience stores. But again, I just felt, don't feel like, you know, it's like, like Alan said, well, the citizens came out on this issue, and so it's a concern. Well, I don't want then, we do it, you know, we make a new rule for that, and then all of a sudden, you know, six months from now, we get a restaurant coming in or dry cleaners or whatever, and people are, you know, concerned about that, and then we have to do the, you know, do we change it, you know, spot, spot changes like that. It sounds like there's enough interest. What if we could ask staff to be thinking of it on this, in this direction? Come up with, out of the typical allowable uses of properties in commercial that we have here in Milton, if you could rank them. And again, I know it's not an exact science, but maybe you could rank them, put them in groups based on what you see elsewhere or whatever. One of them may be convenience stores, other high-intensity uses. You know, then maybe there's the top five are there. Then you've got some more that are a little lower intensity, and then, you know, on down. And then look and come up with some examples or some just good judgment or based on some other jurisdictions, what the buffers are for high-intensity uses and what they are for medium-intensity uses and whatnot. And then, you know, that may be too broad, but I'm thinking then maybe we can capture something reasonable that we can enforce and that we'll kind of...
I agree, because I mean, we've heard that fast food, drive-throughs and stuff is a higher intensity use than a lot of people want around, so.
I think that will go over better too, both to, I mean, it will protect more for the citizens, but also for other applicants. So it won't be just like, hey, we just picked you and added, we've looked, you know, we've got a reason because we picked five businesses that this type, we want a bigger, you know, larger buffer because they're more intense. Then we have a, you know, and again, I know that's an open-ended question, so not asking you to walk away with it, you know, more have that idea. And if the council agrees with it, take your time and, you know, figure, you know, figure it out, knowing that it can change and all that. And then it comes back to us, and then we have to, you know, tweak it or whatever and make a decision.
And a lot of it could be based on traffic counts and all, because obviously for a gas station or a fast food restaurant, the amount of time people spend at that location is much shorter time because they're just driving through. So you're gonna have a lot more traffic than you would for a place that, you know, is an office building where somebody's going and staying for eight hours.
You know, one way may, and you guys know more about it than we do, obviously, but, you know, maybe you take 200 cities that are just like Milton, and I'm sure there's some kind of Google thing or something you can do, and look at what's their average buffer for service stations and what's their average buffer for this. And that would help you kind of rank them. And the higher the buffers are, maybe that's a more intense use or something. I don't know if the...
Yeah. We'll find a way.
But am I clear enough that I think everybody's okay with looking at it in that direction? And that way, we're not just picking one business, but we're trying to look at the whole picture? Is everybody okay if staff works on something like that and brings something like that back to us to discuss?
Sure.
Well, certainly, if I can just interject real quick, we'll certainly do that. You got the question out before we were able to get it out. I guess that's one of the good parts about being the mayor. So we were about to ask y'all to rank your top five high-intensity uses for us. So it's good to be the mayor.
Well, I'll tell you what, I will put gas stations or service stations in one of the top five.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, that actually helps. I mean, we wanted to make sure you all wanted us to do that as opposed to us sitting here getting that feedback from you. Because that was gonna be our next question was, if you were to tell us your top five high-intensity uses, what were those gonna be? But you're right, we do have all sorts of places to tap into, both locally, regionally, state, national level, to figure out what other folks are doing. If you want to give us the latitude to take that first step, I think we can, I think we can do that.
I think we could be a lot more productive if you guys, right or wrong, give us something to look at and then, you know, that'll give us something to work with to go in and direct.
In addition to your point about categorization of use based on intensity, and then to Councilmember Thelma's point about traffic counts, just one other consideration could be the size of that particular building. Obviously, the use becomes even more intense the larger that structure, in a gas station, the more pumps that there are, or for a retail location, the larger that footprint. So that could also be a consideration as you evaluate options.
Okay. You okay with that, Ken?
Aye.
All right, anything else? Yeah, I want to thank everybody that's here tonight, Frank and Allison. Thank you for being here and thank you for sitting through the rest of our meeting. Happy birthday, Mayor. Happy birthday, Mayor.